Welcome to Independence for America with your host, Mike Cantwell.
I am so excited today to be interviewing Monica Gary for my Independence for America podcast. In 2021, Monica Gary ran as an independent and won a seat on the Stafford County, Virginia Board of Supervisors. Monica recently announced that she's running for Virginia Senate, representing the 27th district. Monica, thank you so much for being my guest today on Independence for America. So let's take us back to 2021 and, you know, and what really motivated you? And you finally, you know, you answered the call and you said, I'm going to run for local public office. How did that all come about? And tell us a little bit about your campaign and knocking on doors and fundraising and things like that.
I got involved because of COVID hitting and I wasn't able to do ministry. And so I prayed and like, what am I supposed to do now? Like, I'm just discerning what, what next? Like, this doesn't even make any sense. And I just kept feeling like I was supposed to go out and pray and like, okay, well, I'm not going to be a street preacher and stand in the corner. And, you know, that's not my thing. That's not my calling. Maybe it is for somebody else. But what I did do was as the marches started happening after George Floyd's death, I went out and I said, I'm going to meet people in my community where they are right now. And I started walking with them in these marches and praying for people and talking to people. I don't mean just quietly standing back praying, but engaging, hearing people's stories, praying specifically for them, making those connections. And it was very important to me to find people who would be active after the excitement died down. So I was intentional about connecting with those people. Who's actually going to continue this? Who is going to invest in the community, not just now and drawing attention to some problems, but stick around and help to fix them next month, next year, two years later. Almost three years later now, I'm still working with people that I helped to set up the hashtag enough group, for example, in our area. And I was called on because I was just involved in what was going on and I cared and they knew my heart. They said, will you be on the board to help start this nonprofit? Absolutely. And they're doing amazing things in the community. I couldn't even list it all. I couldn't keep up with it. They work more than I do. I work hard. So that's been really beautiful. I got involved because a lot of their issues, the community's issues generally, specifically back then, people of color, because of what was going on in our country, had a lot to do with policy, government, the policies going on even locally. The thing that really was a straw that broke the camel's back, so to speak, for me was I went into a meeting and the representative for my district voted against a flagpole height ordinance when VDOT had just used eminent domain to expand the highway and it caused this giant Confederate flag to come down that had been flying over our county forever and was causing a lot of problems.
Oh, that's your county. I remember driving up and down 95.
It's gone. It's gone. And when I drove down South Carolina with my family recently for a vacation, I saw the next northernmost one and I was like, we're coming for you next. In my mind, right? But I drive past there and it feels like such a beautiful accomplishment because we did get the support for the flagpole height ordinance. But so they weren't able to put it back up, right? After it had to come down. So, you know, big win because that's divisive. You know what I mean? Whatever you feel about it, it's bad for the community, period. And that's what I went and spoke on, but she voted against it. And at that point I was like, you gotta go. Like, you don't have the wisdom to lead. So, and then Gary, my friend Gary called me later.
I actually, I actually looked at some of the recording of your early speaking in front of your Board of Supervisors. And I was just really blown away that you really dug into the topics. You really understood the policy issues. And then you spoke with conviction and, and passion, which I think was really important. And as you remember, I ran for office in 2021 also. And I just always like to compare notes with people on, you know, this whole decision-making process. And probably similar to you, having the conversation with your spouse and saying, um, I'm thinking about running for office. What do you think about that? And so I'd like to hear it from your end and, and just kind of all the, all the interesting stuff related to running for office. I think a lot of our listeners would like to hear about that.
Sure. I do want to say on the end of the last thing, that my friend Gary, who set up that hashtag enough group was at that meeting and he heard me frustrated about that. And he called me later and he said, are you really thinking about running? So it did take a little prompting.
A little nudge, right?
Right. And, but we have to encourage one another, right? So like you've encouraged me and I like try to encourage you. I wish I had more time to do it. Yeah. So the, the independent campaign is very different. And so I'll speak specifically to that. We don't have access to a lot of the tools and resources that the parties have, and I believe it's on purpose. And I would not be in the position that I'm in to do so well if it wasn't for my amazing team. I have a wonderful campaign manager. My husband is very helpful. We just, we're very blessed, you know? And I, I know that there are many people who are independent who may want to run. And I hope that myself choosing to run and actually being able to win, which was awesome. You, there's so many other people who can give hope to even more people. I've seen this invigoration about independents wanting to actually run and feeling like it's possible. Because what we kept hearing was independents can't win. Well, now you can't say that because I just did, right? And if you look back.
Right on, right on.
And if you look back at the race, it was, it was difficult odds, right? Financially, as far as name recognition, it was very difficult. But if you care and you put in the work and people know who you are and they come to trust your voice, that goes a very long way. And I think the advantage that we have particularly right now is people are tired of the same old politics. They want real people in office who will represent their interests and not play games, right? And so that's something that we can bring as true independents. And so if we have a true, strong independent, you know, very good chances right now, I believe, especially in my area.
Well, and it's so refreshing. I actually feel sorry for Republicans and Democrats because, you know, they, you know, you know, this, they have to get their lists, right? The list of the people who voted in their party primary. And they literally go down through their neighborhoods and they will only knock on the doors of, of a Republican or Democrat. I'm like, what are you talking about? I, I knock on everybody's door. I, I talk to everybody at the farmer's market. It's so freeing and so, so much, so refreshing to do that. And, and, and then, you know, you have someone is a Republican in a very Democratic area or vice versa. And they just, they feel discouraged because they know that, you know, they know that they're wearing a red T-shirt or a blue T-shirt. And if you're wearing a purple shirt, it's so much easier to have a conversation with people. And I'm sure you experienced that also.
Yeah. And you know what I'm seeing? I'm seeing a lot of people, actually even on the Dem side, wearing more purple. I'm like, where are the purple coming from, guys?
I've seen it on their websites. I've seen it on their websites, yeah.
But first of all, and we're throwing up flags, but I'm just kidding. No, it has become like gangs. Like, it's weird. And I understand that culture too, from my background. And, you know, I was with someone who was involved in gang activity. It's very bizarre. But here's the reality. At the end of the day, I like to say, at the end of the day, we're just humans, just trying to figure out how do we live our lives best? And ideally, and I think most people just want to do good and have a peaceful life, you know? And so if I knock on your door and you're over here, over there, but we're talking about things that maybe we don't even agree on, and we can have a graceful conversation, that's progress, right? So I'm, if I'm elected, and I believe I will be, I think we have a really strong chance in this race, by the way, for the 27th district for the Senate. I'm going to represent you too. I'm not going to just represent the interests of one bucket of people. I don't know when we decided that that was okay. I don't think we ever decided that was okay. I think the parties decided that was okay, but people don't want that. If a Democrat is elected, a Republican absolutely still wants to be represented and vice versa. And I think as independents, we can lead the way and say, I'm not going to pick one. Here's where I am. I'm going to care for as many people as possible and not do harm to people. And I know there's going to be some outliers where you're just going to hate me no matter what. And that's okay, because we're just not aligned on the things that are most important to you. And I'm still going to represent you too, but you just won't like me. And that's okay.
And you can't get a hundred percent. You can't get a hundred percent. And, and that's, you know, I say that to people also. And I say, that's okay if you're not going to vote for me. I'm okay with that, but I'm still going to represent you, as you mentioned. So bring us in the room a little bit of, you know, money does matter. But just blow everybody's mind by telling me about the gap in your fundraising versus your opponent's fundraising in 2021. And then, you know, tell us a little bit about, you know, election night and, and, you know, kind of the real inside the room things.
So, oh, election night was funny. So the fundraising was very interesting. The person I was running against had significant resources of his own. And I think that that's not uncommon for what we see in campaigns, especially people who are already in office and have privilege to certain information and connections where they can front load. And it's not grassroots. It's just they have access to larger capital, right? And he had front loaded his campaign with about $500,000, right? On top of some other little donations that came in comparatively to that. So that's what we're up against. And then we had 10,000. I think it topped out around 13 by the time the final report came out.
Well, I looked at your numbers and, and the 13 includes, you know, in-kind donations. So it looks like the cash you collected was even less than 10,000.
Yeah. Yes.
I mean, that's, that's just amazing, just amazing. And, and yeah, so bring us into, you know, so these are probably small dollar donations and probably just friends and family and maybe neighbors that you collected. Is that, is that about right?
Yes, there were just people in the community that knew who I am and my heart, and they wanted to invest. And I just, like I said, I'm, I'm a mom. I have seven children. Whatever you give me, and women do this. So I'm just going to like harp on this for, for women candidates real quick. I hope you don't mind. But like whatever you give us, we're going to make it better, right? You've, you've seen that thing, you give her a house, she'll give you a home. You give her, you know, the food, she'll cook it, make a meal. Like, this is what we do. So I took what I had and I just capitalized on it and made it work. And, and it worked.
All right. So tell me about election night. I want, I want to hear about that one.
So election night, I had, I said, oh, let me just go out. I should invite people, you know, maybe people want to come. I don't think anyone thought I was going to actually win. So I, I said, we're going to be at this restaurant and hanging out. And so some people texted me, but no one really came. My husband and I went out to dinner. And so we were sitting there and the results were still rolling in. So, okay, let's just go home. So we're sitting in our, this room right here. And there was a fold out, it's like a sofa bed in here. And I just had it pulled out and I'm just kind of lounging and whatever. Okay, the numbers are coming in. All the Republicans are winning, right? And I was running against a Republican. Everyone on our, on the ballot, I was on, everyone won who was Republican all the way down, except for our race. We won. And it was right towards the end of the race where those final numbers were coming in. And I couldn't believe it. I thought that I lost. I was like, oh, well, you know, we tried. And then there it was. I was like, this is crazy. So, no, it was, it was pretty intense. I, I don't know that I expected to win. I didn't have any expectations. I felt called to run. When someone asked me early on, one of my supporters, he said, um, do you really think you can win this? I said, I, do you think you're supposed to win this and be in this seat? You know, why do you want to do this? And I said, well, I know I'm called to run. Like, that's what I know I'm supposed to do. I'm going to do this. I'm going to show people you can do it. And then we won.
I mean, that's, that's, that's awesome. And that's really exciting. So then you get sworn in and then, then you had this early challenge of the, the Stafford ice storm of 2022. Sorry to make you really, are you having PTSD from that?
No, you know what? That was my first week on the job, my first week on the job. And I remember looking out and seeing all the snow and being like, oh, it's so pretty. And the kids can play and stay home from school. And then it clicked and I was like, oh crap. I'm on the board and I have to do something about this. And so all of our comms were down. I had to go up to the EOC and a few of my other colleagues went up there. And, and I was out driving around in the snow, just trying to do what I could to be there for people, bring in supplies. I was so proud of our community. Specifically, one area in Acquaharbor, they had set up their own shelter. It was just beautiful to see people taking care of each other, but it was definitely difficult. What it did was revealed a lot about people around me and what, how they would respond to something like that. You see a lot in an emergency. It's different than sitting on a dais and watching, you know, people pontificate for a half an hour. When you're actually in an emergency, you see different facets of people. So I did appreciate having that insight.
Monica, what are some of your priorities on the, on the Stafford County Board? What are some of the things that you've been really working hard on?
I don't know if I could condense that for you. There's so much. What I walked into in Stafford is that we've grown so quickly. And we just don't have the framework to support what's here now, the people who are here now, the things that we need. And so it's felt like sometimes a lot of putting out fires. And then other times trying to figure out how do we be proactive? So I can give you some of the, the big pieces and I'll probably forget something. In the beginning, one of the first things was addressing the Brook Road flooding. That was something I fought for while I was running. And so we made some progress there and got some, some funds. So we've had to continue that project. So that's going on. They did raise the road. People are safe for now, but we do have the full project and we have to fund that. So that's a big one. Acquaharbor Town Center is like the thorn in my side that was left from previous supervisors' bad decisions. But I think that there's a silver lining where a lot more commercial is starting to want to come to the area with the growth that we've had. And so the last conversation I had with the developers who own that property. Acquaharbor Town Center for background is basically they were going to put in a new town center. It didn't happen. And the stuff that was there that people liked got shut down, like a gym at one point. There was a theater, all, all kinds of different things. And now there's just an empty parking lot and it's marring the community.
It's kind of sad.
It is, it really is. So, so my thing has been the developers wanted to put in residential. I'm like, I, I don't think you guys have the money, even if you wanted to, to make this cost neutral, which was the language they were using, as far as if you were going to put in residences for what would be acceptable. So go find the commercials. So I just keep pushing on that. Go find what we need for that. So not a ton of progress there, but we are getting a new restaurant. We had a new restaurant. We have a new coffee shop coming in hopefully. We've got some stuff across the street that's getting redeveloped that we just approved. So some, some progress there, which is a really big deal. Commercial development.
How about some, sorry to interrupt, but how about some of the, just the different tone that you bring and maybe a different perspective? Again, you know, people all over the country, especially people who are considering running for office as independents, you know, would really like to hear what you're bringing to the table that is different than Republicans or Democrats.
So I think what I would say is in all these things, so any of the things I could have just listed for you, road projects, economics development, funding the schools specifically, which is something I can talk about. The thing that I bring is not necessarily different, but it's connecting. So, you know, I made a post yesterday, I think you might've seen where I was like a red wave, you know, blue wall, welcome to the purple table. Like, here's where we actually get stuff done. Because if we don't talk to each other, it's broken, right? We can't get things done for people. So like, if my brain doesn't, half my brain doesn't talk to my body, I'm going to be paralyzed. And that's what we've been seeing in our politics. So I really get to be a connector and say, okay, well, what's realistic that, that people are saying over here? And what's realistic and makes sense that they're saying over here? And what's the right thing? And bring that together and give new ideas for what does that look like to find real solutions? And so I think that would be the difference. It's not necessarily that I have a whole other thing that's different than everyone. It's that I kind of bridged that gap. I get to be a bridge.
All right. Let's fast forward to about six months ago, when you, I guess you were thinking, you, you heard about the redistricting. You knew that you were in the 27th district. And take us through your thought process on deciding to run for Virginia State Senate. And then give us, paint a little picture about your Republican candidate and the Democratic candidate. And, and I purposely use that word candidate instead of opponent, because I, I also think that our politics gets a little bit too heated and that our fellow citizens shouldn't be considered our opponents. Let's just say candidate number one and candidate number two.
Okay, that's fair. I'm a little more competitive, so I will say opponent, but I appreciate your language because it is a competition, right? And that's okay. It doesn't have to be a bad thing. You know, we encourage that in our, in our business, in our country, right? There should be competition. So I'm okay with that, but I like your, your view too. So I will say, when I knew about the redistricting, when it was happening, I got a lot of questions from people in the community, even though I had just been elected, because this was happening right afterwards, saying, would you consider running for the House or the Senate seat? So I was already getting inquiries from my constituents. I didn't really consider it because I wanted to do what I was doing here and make an impact. I didn't realize I would be able, and I'm a hard worker, but I didn't realize I would make so much progress so quickly in my supervisor seat that I would even feel comfortable considering that run. But I feel like we've been able to make a significant, significant progress. So I am okay with that. And my biggest thing was finding someone who could replace me if I did get elected, so that we didn't have a vacuum for bad leadership to come back in. The person I ran against last time is running for the House now. I don't anticipate that he will win that seat. I think that his, the other candidate running against him is more liked by the community and will probably win that race. That's just my, my projection from knowing people. So he, he might try to come back and get in the supervisor seat. So for me, I was like, people didn't want that. They voted, they displayed that. So finding someone else who could fill in was important. So I've done that. I, as this progressed and I was doing my work as a supervisor, I realized I might be able to step up and run for either or. The House seat is being the candidate there, I'm, who is running against my previous, it's really hard to not use the word opponent, Mike.
You can use whatever you want.
My previous opponent, I was going to say it. I, I trust him. I think he's going to do a great job, the guy who's running against him. So I didn't want to get into that race, even as an independent. But I felt like I could represent best our new district, which is mostly Stafford County, like I've said, in the Senate. And being on the board has helped me to understand the different things that we need and how those things are not being provided by the state. One of the candidates on, so we have three people on one side and two on the other, since we haven't had the primary yet. So we have two Republicans in the running. They're running a primary and then three Democrats. I could do a whole other podcast on how that developed and the insider baseball on this is like, would blow your mind. It's crazy. So anyway, fun things aside, on the Republican side, one of the candidates is in the House now, so she's a delegate. We won our race at the same time. We were on the, some of the same ballots. So there are some people who have already voted for both of us. So that's going to be interesting if I have to run against her. The other reason it'll be interesting is because one of the biggest issues we have is funding schools. Our schools are in disrepair. I'm talking about, we've got an elementary school that had a copperhead problem, a sewage problem. We've got multiple with asbestos still in the walls. That's why I'm pushing for these tax increases to fund our schools, because it needs to happen, period. Like, this isn't about waste. You know, this is, this has to happen. These are our children, right? She did nothing. I called her as soon as she was elected, before the session started, plenty of time to write up legislation or figure out, you know, what you needed to do. And I'm going to hit the ground running. I already know. There are things I'm going to say, I'm going in with this and pre-submission, pre-filing is November 20. So I'm going to be ready to go in November, right? No matter what happens, I'm ready. I called her, I said, we need our COCA, which is the cost of competing adjustment. We need that fixed because we're only at 25% in Stafford County. We need it higher. Everybody knows that. She didn't fight for it. She said, I don't know what to do. I'm not on that committee. Later she's pushing school choice and not really trying to get school funding. Well, you could have just said that to begin with, but maybe that was the political tactic.
Well, and, and she's a Republican. So she probably, I mean, you can tell me if it's true or not, but she's probably getting her marching orders from, from the party leaders.
She absolutely is. And I respect her.
They're telling her how to vote.
I respect her as a human being. We've had breakfast together. We pray together. I called her and I told her when I decided to run, because that's the right thing to do. But as far as being effective in doing what the people need, she's just not cutting it. And she has said from her own mouth, I'm doing this because I was told to run for this seat. Because her, after the redistricting, her old House seat is more blue and Joshua Cole's coming back and will likely win it. So she just gave it up and went for the next thing because she, it's marching orders, right? And so that's what we're seeing there. On the Dem side, I've worked with one of the candidates before on some issues. They endorsed me, the Democrats endorsed me for my supervisor race. When one of those candidates, Ben Litchfield, was the chair for the Dems in Stafford County. So he's actually endorsed me before. So that's interesting. He is, right now, he's my utilities commissioner for our district. And so we have a good working relationship, I think. And then there's another candidate, I, I don't know too well. I'm trying to get to know who's Luke Wright. And then the other one just entered and he was called on because I was called and asked to run as a Democrat. And I said, I'm independent. I'm going to stay independent. And then they went and found another person to ask them to run because someone didn't like the other candidates already in there. There's the insider baseball thing. So it's, it's a real weird dynamic right now, watching this play out.
So I went to, who's Strickland? Is she the Republican running also?
Is running against Tara Durant on the Republican side. So Strickland owns Gormeltz. He's the one that did not shut down during COVID. And so he got some notoriety for that. I think he did take some money from, yes, significant, though he didn't shut down. So that's questionable for some people. But some other issues with law enforcement, the way he talks about it.
Is he going to win the, is he going to win the Republican nomination or is he in a different district?
No, he is in this district, running against Tara Durant in the primary. And so we'll see, you know, who wins that. But I've had conversations with him too. You know, I called him, I told him I'm running. You know, he's actually been supportive. He's like, if I don't win it, then you're probably the next best one. You know, so we've had, we've had those conversations. They're very divided on that side. So I think that'll work for us too. I don't want someone to vote for me because they dislike someone else, but I am the best candidate because I know the issues and I know how to get these things done. Being on regional boards, I think this is the most important thing, I'll say lastly. Being on regional boards in my supervisor seat, I have relationships with people all over the place. And, and in the General Assembly already. So I'm walking in already with relationships on the left and the right with people who are in Finance and Appropriations. That, that's not a thing that happens and it takes forever for you to get there if you want to be in that committee yourself. So that's a big deal.
So I've had a few conversations with your campaign manager and he's, he is earnestly saying, no, she really has a good chance to win. And he does have a lot of, Jack does have a lot of experience and I really believe him when he says, you, you really have a good chance of winning. And people like you, winning at the local level and then at the state senate level are so inspiring for other people throughout the country who are also thinking about running as independents. And I've also looked at the, some of the websites of your opponents. And, you know, Strickland's opponent, Strickland's video is, it's pretty dark. It really is. And, and I think he used the word fight about 15 times and a lot of just crazy negative stuff. And, and he's an Iraq war veteran, but he almost seems like he hates other Americans more than he hates other people. And that's a really, really sad place that we've, we've gone to in our, our country. And then the, the Democrat Lynchfield, what was his name again? Yeah, it was, it was like, you know, butterflies and, and, you know, roses and no real substance there, right? So I really am impressed that you really dig into the issues. You, you obviously do your homework before you go, go to a board meeting or something like that. And there are a lot of candidates that just don't do that. And, and I, and I'm seriously impressed with, with that. So I'm really, really interested in following your campaign. I know a lot of our listeners are also interested in following your campaign. How can they reach your campaign? Do you have a URL? Are you, are you on, on social media? How can they reach out to you? How can they go to your campaign website and maybe even donate to your campaign?
Thank you. Yes, we do have, our website is monicagary.com, very simple. So M-O-N-I-C-A-R-Y.com. Thank God it's not my maiden name, as I mentioned earlier. So, which is de-gastine. I think they said that, you know, offline. But anyway, so yes, monicagary.com. I'm on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. Instagram, I'm less active. It tends to be more of like a global reach. I don't really advertise there. It's, there's a big following, mostly from my ministry, but I'll, I'll post some things there periodically, mostly Facebook. If you want conversations, you know, follow me on Facebook. If you want to get involved in real conversations and, and have good interaction, good solid, you know, interaction there, then follow me there. And if you just want the, the zingers and to support me when I say something cool, hop on Twitter. So, but you know, there's, there's different, you know, spaces for different things. I think I'm planning on doing some actual spaces on Twitter as the campaign progresses, so we can actually talk to each other. I like Clubhouse, that was inspired from Clubhouse, which I was on earlier. And I love being able to converse with people, just like these podcasts do, right? And it just gives so much more color to. just like these podcasts do, right? And it just gives so much more color to who we are and allows people to interact and ask questions and, you know, do the, the hard conversations. So I'll, I'll do some of that later too. But Twitter is monicagary13. Uh, apparently Monica Gary wasn't available, so I got a 13 at the end. Um, and then the Facebook, you can just look up my name, the, the on, like honorable, which is from the supervisor title, uh, Monica Gary, or at M Gary for the people is the, um, the handle there, if you want to use the handle on Facebook to find me. And you can give on the website. I mean, ask that too. So there, there is a page to donate, obviously. Um, we also have a P O Box 243. Now I memorize this. P O Box 243, Stafford, Virginia, 22554, I want to say. Yes. But I'm going to post that on the website too.
Yes. So, so anyone out there in podcast land, please go to her website and, and, um, you know, donate a few bucks that you can afford. I think it's really important. And, and I do appreciate that you, you are active on social media and you, uh, so you, you have like an intern that responds to all your social media, right? I'm being a little sarcastic, right?
No.
No, you do your own stuff, right?
Yeah, I do. And I, I considered it. It's a lot of work. But that's like, if I'm knocking on doors and talking to people, like this is where, that's our third spaces, as they call it, especially for children now, right? Obviously this isn't for kids, but in determining where are the places that we live, um, young people especially have, have gone there. Now you have an older demographic on Facebook and that's fine. Maybe why we have more in-depth, longer conversations. I don't know. You all have more patience for it, the older you get. You have more time. I don't know. Um, but I love all of it and I love to have these conversations. And so it's always me. Um, it's always me. You're going to get me if you, if you comment, if you send a message. And I'll, I'll let everyone know if that changes, but you can probably tell my tone of voice anyways and the way I communicate.
Right. I, I definitely did my own social media when I was running and, and, you know, I, I just kind of had one or two posts a day. I didn't post every second or something like that. But I thought it was important to take pictures, post and, and engage with the public. I thought that was really important. Monica, thank you so much for participating in this podcast today and giving voice to the politically homeless out there. Cause we have a lot of politically homeless that are just looking for another way, different types of candidates. And, um, you are, you know, one of the few that have run, when, won and also are serving right now. So we really appreciate it. Um, before we, uh, close, I want to say that this episode of Independence for America was produced by Adam Theo. Uh, he did a wonderful job setting all this up. And Monica, I'm going, I'm going to let you have the last word. Is there any, anything you'd like to tell everybody out there in podcast land?
Yes. Um, I think the most important thing to, to grapple with, because this might be challenging to hear at first, is that we are not one another's enemies, generally speaking. I know there's some outliers, but we are not enemies. Um, we can be competitors, right? But we're not enemies. When I sat in my board meeting yesterday and we were fighting for school funding for, for children and educators that really need it, and I looked out, I was so touched. I was just, just thrilled, even through today, to see the group Red for Ed, representatives from there, and Moms for Liberty, talking to each other about funding our schools. It blew my mind. And, and I almost don't even want to talk about it because I don't want anyone to come mess it up. Cause I've been working so hard to get people to communicate on the important things and just be neighbors and just be people who fight for the right thing and let the other stuff sit to the side for a bit. Like, let's just get to know who we are. We're, we're not enemies. We don't have to be.
Hey, that is a great way to end this podcast. So, um, you know, love your neighbor and, and talk to your neighbor. Uh, it, it's not hard. Um, we, we don't need to, um, fight about everything. And sometimes we just need to be good neighbors. So thanks again, Monica. I really appreciate it. And I'm going to follow your campaign. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for having me.